Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:09 PM. It is Tuesday, October 20th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Councilor Sheil is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For your two and justice for all.
Would the City Secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Ellison.
I don't think he heard you.
Sheil.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Villalobos.
President.
Tobias.
Tobias here.
All right, I believe that's all seven. So seven members present, we have a quorum. Next up is the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council special meeting minutes from October 6, 2020, and the city council meeting minutes from October 6, 2020.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Sheil, seconded by Councilmember Ellison, to approve the minutes for October 6, both special and regular. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, citizen comment period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We also have an online registration process for submitting comments online. Jennifer, do we have anyone online registered?
No one online registered. We have some people in the audience. I'm not sure if anyone wants to speak. No one present wants to speak.
Okay, sounds good. So if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments period. It is now closed. Next up, presentation update on the progress of Old Post Road. This is Councilor Ellison.
Sorry, everyone. So, thank you. I believe we have a presentation that will be done by staff, but the purpose of bringing this forward before they speak. We have been trying to make progress on Old Post Road to get it ready for construction that would be done by the county. And this is something that both myself and Councilmember Sheil have been particularly pushing to make as much progress. I know the entire council has really. And so I just wanted to give a public update for our residents, particularly of Post Oak, to see where we are as far as progress on this and how close we are to handing it off to the county. And then from there, it will be in the county's hands to take it off and hopefully move up on their schedule of projects. But with that being said, is it Leon? Are you going to do the presentation for us?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barber. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. I'm Barbara, City Engineer. I mentioned this at the last meeting, but this project has been designed by one of our consultant firms, CPNY. Plans are complete. We've already started our permitting process with Tech Stop. We'll need a permit from them because we'll be working in the right-of-way at 150, where the Old Post Road meets 150. We've got to do some drainage improvements in there. So we've already gotten the first round of comments from Tech Stop. It usually takes about two, three months at the most to get a permit back from them. The other issue that we're having is at the south end of the project. We're negotiating with the owners to acquire some of that right-of-way so that we can straighten out that intersection and have it stand as a regular type of intersection. Right now, it's got that curve that goes back to the east, and we're trying to straighten that road out. So we're negotiating with the owners and hoping that we can complete that as soon as possible. Public Works needed to lower a wastewater, I mean, a water line, and they have done that. That's done. We're continuing to have discussions with the county. We'll have some meetings coming up with them to make sure that we coordinate with the county on this project. There's a lot of little things that need to be worked out, such as, I'll just give you some examples. We've got fences to move and replace. The county doesn't do that. We've got revegetation that we'll have to do after the project's finished, but county doesn't do that, so we'll have to end up putting contracts out for that. They also are asking us to do the last layer of mix that goes on the road, so it means we'll have to get a contract out for that. And then, of course, we need to figure out how they're going to build the project, so we need to work with them closely on, are they going to try to close the whole road? Are they going to close it in sections? If we're going to close the road at certain sections, how do we set detours up? We certainly don't want trucks going through the neighborhood, so that's going to be a tough one to set up those detours. So we've got to be real careful about that. Also, the interlocal agreement. Initially, I thought the county was going to prepare that, but I was told that I needed to do that by the county, so I went ahead and prepared the interlocal agreement. Fortunately, they sent me a good draft that I could work off of, so it's back in their hands right now for their review by their legal staff. And that's where we are today.
Thank you, Leon. Appreciate that update. One question I had was as far as the right-of-way acquisition for what if the design included that right turn? Because I think when, a few months back, when we were talking about it, there at Old Post Road and 150, so majority of the traffic is going to be turning left out of there to head towards the interstate. So did we make, did the design include a separate lane for a right turn to go down east 150 with the main lane being to turn left to go towards the interstate?
Yes, Councilmember, we did include that.
Okay. And then what does it look like on the south end of Old Post Road there at 158?
We're proposing a trade, and the owners have, they've met with us. They talked to us. They're interested. And of course, you know, we're asking it just a straight trade, but there's always those little things that you have to worry about, like what about water meters? What about fences? You're also interested in the zoning, that they can get there. It's really small. First of all, they would end up with maybe half an acre of a developable piece of property. So we just need to see what they want from the city and what we can accommodate on that right now.
Okay. And then my final question, and certainly will open up to my colleagues. Once again, what was the timeline that we think we may be completing our end of before we pass it on to take over by the county?
Initially, we were told late summer, but that has been moved up to February, last I talked to the county.
Okay, for moving this project up for them. But as far as, when do we think that we would be done with our end of the list, essentially?
It's going to depend on the right-of-way negotiation. Our alternate plan would be that if things just fall apart in the negotiation, we can build up to that curve there at the south end and then continue negotiating with them to try to, and have to maybe come back and build that section. That's my alternate plan. If all else fails, we'll just stop right where that road curves, and then we'll just have to come back later and try to build the rest of it later.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I saw Harper, a quick flash. Good to see you, sir. But certainly, this, be happy to open up to the rest of the council for any questions or thoughts or comments on the progress on Old Post Road.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. This is Councilmember Rizzo. Since we've got Harper on here, Harper, I sent you some pictures on Post, Old Post Road. Were you able to follow up on those?
Sir, are you referring to the pothole situation?
Yes, correct.
Yes, sir. I sent an email. You may not have been able to see it yet. You may have been in executive session already. But yes, sir, we already repaired that. It was indeed inside the city limits. And our staff is going back out there as well tomorrow morning because there's further shoulder work that needs to be done, not just what was shown in the picture.
I appreciate, yeah, I saw all the shoulder on there and in the pothole, but we had several citizens that hit that pothole pretty hard. So I appreciate you and your staff going out there and taking care of it in a timely manner. I know Post Road has a lot of traffic and might be something we need to keep an eye on until the county comes up with a product, comes up with the new road and just something to just be able to watch because of the heavy traffic out there, especially from the large trucks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Leon, first of all, thank you very much for that presentation. That's very helpful, and that's really good news that the county at least has brought it back up to early of next year instead of that later timeline that they had given us. I guess my one concern about the whole project is going to be the cement plant and working with those trucks. Because I know that we were going to ask them to utilize only going northbound once that road is complete. So hearing that we are going to have a right turn lane added to that, that that's going to be very helpful because all those trucks are going to be wanting to turn left onto 150 and backing that traffic up. So I do appreciate that. I am still concerned about the southbound, the south side of the road, especially with the alternate plan. I just, that little turn is, you know, it's dangerous right now as it is and just with added more traffic from the, as it is a side maneuver street to avoid 35 access roads, especially when it's, there's an accident on I-35. It's just that that turn is just, ooh. So I hope we don't have to go to that alternate plan. But one of the other things I am concerned about is when we're detouring the road, and at some point, those trucks from the cement plant are going to have to turn right and head south and go to 158 to get to 35, and then that hairpin turn. So when we're looking kind of at that timeline, are we looking at building out the north side first, or are we looking at the south side first?
Councilmember, we need to meet with the county and see how they want to phase it into their plan. We've got a meeting, I think, planned in a couple of weeks with them to kind of start going over those details because they need, we also need to provide what's called construction staking. And so we'll have to get a surveying firm to help us provide their construction staking. So we need to know exactly what their schedule is going to be so we can make sure we coordinate that staking that they need with the surveyor that we're going to be hiring. So in the next couple of weeks, three weeks, we'll be meeting with the county, start planning how we're going to phase that project. Once I get a really good idea of what their plan is, I can get back with you and let you know and share that plan with you.
All right, thank you. And I know the residents of Post Oak are really appreciating the fact that we are still keeping on this and also the members of the church that's out there as well. I think their transmissions are also looking forward to the very, for a new road. So yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you for bringing that forward, Councilwoman Ellison. All right, next up, presentation on Streets, Division and Projects. Mr. Wilder.
Mayor and Council, Harper Wilder, Public Works Director. Just a quick update. We just got started, you know, with October and the new budget, but new personnel. The superintendent, we're, the job description's being worked on right now. The interviews for the tech twos and tech ones are being conducted almost weekly. We just had three accepted. Two were in the construction. One was maintenance. So we'll get to the construction on that one, but that's a weekly thing going on right now. And we're going to try to continue that for, HR is able to keep up with that. So the equipment, the distributor, the water truck, dump trucks and whatnot, the specs are being worked. We have to spec out every piece on each one of those, piece of equipment. Everything from the chassis to the beds to the weight, everything's going in on that, the engine size. So all those specs are being worked as we speak on each one. There's about five or six that we've already completed specs. We've received all the quotes, and those should be on the next council meeting. And that's all for personnel and equipment. As far as projects go, just a quick update. As you knew, we completed the Gonzalez and Hayes. The guys just did the completion of all the micro paving prep work. So there are many places that the micro paving needed additional work, some reconstruction that the construction staff went in and went ahead of each street that was proposed and worked each one of those so that it would be prepped properly for the micro paving. The guys are on right now. They're on a project at Tower Drive and Myrtle in Water Leaf. Really bad road in there that the settling has made some, you know, very large impressions that they're trying to work on. We'll be tearing that entire road out over the next few weeks, I would assume. And still waiting, Center and South Street medians for the silent crossing, the medians that we have to install on both of those streets. We're still waiting for the right of entry from the railroad. I think we've got another week to, week to two from the projected three to four weeks that they said originally. So we're trying to get that Tower Drive and Myrtle Drive done so that we'll be ready as soon as the railroad gives us the okay to start that median project. And then after that median project, we'll be moving on to the Center Street and Old Stagecoach Road. And that's just a quick update. If y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Harper. Any questions?
Harper, this is Councilman Tobias. Have they started that project on Sapphire?
On Sapphire, no. Yeah, that's the, you're talking about the one that we met out there, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, sir, they met. I think Kathy's on here too. We met at original date that we went out there, then they just met the other day. Kathy actually met with them, and they were actually done before Bo got out there. And from what I understand from Bo, we're going to be starting like...
Probably this week or next week.
Okay. Scott's telling me probably this week or early next week.
Right, thanks, sir.
Yeah, we got the approval to go in there, and I think Kathy's on here. So Kathy, if you want to chime in.
Hello, everyone. Yes, we did get the authorization to go ahead and make the temporary drainage improvements on that property. And meeting with Bo, he was making me start working on it possibly this week or early next week.
Kathy, it's Councilmember Rizzo. I just want to thank you and Harper and all the staff. When I first was made aware of this drainage problem, you were the first phone call, and we're able to put together a plan and execute it and able to, now we're going to be able to rectify this. And I just want to thank y'all for the collaboration and for staying on top of this situation and for seeing it to be done here next week. Thank you for all y'all's help. And Councilmember Tobias as well for being us out there and being a part of this process as well.
Sir, I think it's important to point out too, as Kathy was mentioning, the temporary work that will be done out there. Kathy's discussion with the new owner, whenever they developed that land behind that citizen that we went to see, the new owner develops that, all of that drainage should be taken care of through their internal storm drain process and detention.
That is correct.
That's awesome. Good job.
I'll clear up for that. Appreciate it.
Sir.
Harper, in regards to Tower and Myrtle project, has the, was the HOA informed so that we can make sure that those residents were informed that that's going to be happening?
That's a great point, and I know that staff went down there and was talking to individuals throughout the day while they were out there, but ahead of time, I don't believe so, ma'am, and I will rectify that first thing tomorrow. I apologize.
Well, I will let you know the HOA is very appreciative of all the work your staff did on that one's drainage easement. So that was great. Thank you very much for that.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome. And I apologize for getting in touch with them. I will get in touch with them first thing tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Harper. Anyone else? All right, we're going to go ahead and move on. Next up, Agenda Item Number Six, Presentation on Marijuana Statistics. Councilwoman Ellison.
If there's no objection, I'd like to postpone this item until a future date.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Next up, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Go ahead, Leon.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. I'm Barbara, City Engineer. This is our update on our CIP road projects. We'll start off with Lehman Road. Still waiting on that last pay estimate to come in. They're still working on some final walkthrough items that they need to repair and complete. We did get the inspection report. They did inspect the project for if it complies with ADA, and we're waiting for the report on that one. That should be coming in pretty quickly. We had some problems with the inlet covers. They have been fixed and completely repaired and redone, so that work is complete. We do have one more thing that we need to do on the bridge, and that's to do a seal on the bridge. And that's, they're waiting on the contractor. That's a specialized operation, so that takes a while for somebody. These guys work statewide, so sometimes it's difficult to get these guys to come in on a quick timeframe. But that's where we are with Lehman Road. On Burleson Street, we haven't gotten any pay estimates yet. The project manager's working on the next one that's coming in, so we'll update that as soon as we get that information. Again, these guys are working on their punch list and trying to resolve those issues that we've identified. And again, we're waiting for the report. The ADA inspection has been done. We're just waiting on the report for that. On the south side wastewater project, we're still at 64%. We're still reviewing the next pay estimate they've just turned in, so we're reviewing that. We still have one crew at the list station. The second crew is working, has finished the work near the Public Works Building. So now they're working on the lines that are going to be there by the TDCJ facility. And there's one bore that they have to do there, so, but that's what they're working on. They're just downstream from the Public Works Department. Or upstream, I should say. The third crew that we have out there, they did finish both bores at the south end of the project, and they're getting ready to start the two remaining bores on the north end of the project. Treatment plant, we're at 14.4%. The project manager has the pay estimate, and they're completing that. Got some vertical concrete walls that are completed at the inflight list station. The operations building work is started, and they're still working on some electric butt banks and manholes, and they're still staying on schedule with their construction. This is the overall view of the site. There's a lot of work going on out there. And this is pretty impressive. This is at the headworks where all the sewer is coming in. So that's like, that's a major operation. It's about 30 to 40 feet deep there. The Bud Creek Interceptor was just awarded. We plan to issue them a notice to proceed on November 1st. It's a 250-day project. Initially, we were going to start them on November 15th, but they asked if they could start after the holidays, Thanksgiving holidays, and we said they would be fine. So they'll be starting in December with that project. Well, site four, we've got 150 calibers to finish that project. That's about 342,000 for the rehabilitation of that storage tank. It's going to have some shrouding on it, so it'll be covered up while they're doing their work blasting. It's a full-blown sandblast of the whole tower, inside and outside. We're estimating to start that sometime in mid-November, and we can start taking water out of the tank, so we had it ready for the contractor. The micro surfacing work's been completed. We're planning to complete the striping this week. The Elliott Branch Wastewater Improvement Project, we were hoping to open up bids tomorrow, but there was a problem with some of the estimate numbers, so we went ahead and pushed that out till Friday. So hopefully Friday, we'll get a good bid in from the contractors, but we're getting ready to push that project out for construction. Got information today on the Gassetta Ranch Roundabout. They plan to start next Thursday, October 29th. I asked them if they were going to provide some kind of advance notice, and I didn't get a clear answer as to whether they would be putting it out three days, seven days, or what in advance of that work. So I'm still waiting for their answer on that. I know they're going to be putting advance signs at the project, but I just needed to make sure that they gave the public plenty of notice that there's going to be some construction in the area. And that's my presentation.
Leon, this is Councilman Tobias. I just wanted to thank you, Joanne, and Scott Sellers for helping us out on that inlet's repair issue we had on Lehman. You know, getting a phone call on Saturday mornings from the residents on Brandy Blue. Drove out there to see what it was, and of course, those brackets were not the right size. Of course, it was making a very loud noise every time the cars rolled over. So I appreciate you guys really staying on top of that and then getting the construction done and directing the northbound traffic to Iver and so forth and that end. So I appreciate y'all's help on that, getting that squared away for the... And then on the striping, micro surfing, is a steeplechase included in that as well?
I'm trying to remember what the striping looked like there. What we do...
I'm not sure if there really actually was any.
Typically, we don't add any striping. We've only changed the striping on the street one time. I just changed it on Hawthorne. We revised the striping on Hawthorne. Typically, what the contractor will do, they'll tab the existing striping, and they'll match exactly what's there. So if there was no striping on there, then they won't put it back.
Okay. Okay, I just didn't know if that was going to be added on that, to that street.
Are you of the opinion that we might need to look at that?
If you don't mind, they won't mind looking at that because that is a traffic, that is a street that's used a lot, especially with the buses that come through there from Fuentes and so forth. So if you wouldn't mind looking into that.
Yes, sir. I don't recall any striping on that one, but we'll certainly look at it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, appreciate y'all's hard work on that.
Thank you.
Leon, have we had any issues with that median that I guess comes just south of the railroad tracks on Burleson Road? That kind of goes into the roadway for the neighborhood, Brook, Brookside, Brook, yeah.
Creekside?
Yes, Creekside, yeah. Have we had any issues with that? I know we were concerned because, you know, it was longer than the actual intersection, and people turning left could actually, you know, hit that curb. Have we had any issues?
I think you can actually go out there and see tire marks on that median. So I think people are, some folks are having troubles with that, with that median. And maybe Mr. Sellers can correct me, but I think we're looking at trying to revise that later. We're trying to get this to meet the quiet zone requirements, so we're having to work with the Uni-Pacific and the FRA to, Federal Railroad Administration, to make sure we're able to make all five of our crossings part of the quiet zone. So if there's a way that we can cut that down and still meet their requirements, then that's something we were talking about doing or planning to do. But right now, you can actually see the tire marks where they have been hitting it.
Okay.
I think the bus might have had his time.
Yeah, probably. Matter of fact, it's in his pictures. Can you go back to your slides of the pictures of Burleson Road? That one right there.
Okay, so I can guarantee you that it's got yellow markings now, so hopefully...
Okay, so I can guarantee you that it's got yellow markings now, so hopefully they can see it. So I think we've added that to it, so that might be helping. Were you able to tell if that's helping Leon? The yellow paint that was added to it?
I'm not sure if the buses are still having problems with that. I bet the buses are still having a hard time swinging around there. And if you're driving pretty quickly through there, yeah, you're gonna have a problem with that median, but, you know, folks don't know how to, they won't drive slow if they can help it. But I would imagine the buses are having an issue with it.
And we've been getting some complaints about people speeding up and down Burleson. So, you know, just to remind the residents out there that it was a long time waiting for this road to be open. Let's appreciate it. Let's respect all the neighborhoods and all the people that commute and walk by there, so hopefully we can slow down through there. Be much appreciated.
Leon, I switched to my phone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We didn't, Scott Egbert and I did not think that there was striping on Steeple Chase prior, and he went and looked up Google Earth and back to '08, we're not seeing any striping. I just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you Leon, thank you Harper. Any other comments, questions? Alright, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Agenda Item Number Eight, Presentation Regarding Launch Projects Module on City Website. Samantha.
Good evening Mayor Council, Samantha Armbruster, Director of Communications. What we have heard from council and residents since I've been here is a need for more communication about the projects going on in the city. Citywide, but also more hyper-local. What's going on in the neighborhoods? What's going outside people's doors? And tonight, we are excited to announce the launch of the Projects Module that we believe will allow for that, and I'm gonna walk through this now. So again, with the goal of being active, accessible, and hyper-local, and giving information about city projects, and even projects that are happening and being driven by third parties such as Tech dot and developers. This project module, and I will dive in and show a live view of this, but it is a one-stop page for projects. There is a very friendly map that is searchable. It will also have the status updates for each project. So what Leon shares at City Council every other week, those status updates will be also put on this project's module. So one click on the map, go to a project, see what's happening, not only what the background and the goal of the project is, see some images, but also the status updates as well. This project module is available from the homepage of our cityofkyle.com website. It is also on our recently-launched City of Kyle mobile app. So both of those locations will get you to the Projects Module, and at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and dive right into the site. So again, from our homepage, cityofkyle.com, you'll now see a button that says Projects. If you click on this, it will take you to the Projects Module that has all of our city projects, and we are building this out. So while not every single project is on the site, we're building it, and it will grow. This is a live, never always changing, up-to-date module. So you'll see that there is a map there, and you can click on the button in your neighborhood. You can zoom in to see something that, what's going on more hyper-local to you. And if you click on a line, those are also projects as well that can be viewed from the map. You can also view the projects in more depth by clicking on the link here. So for example, we heard earlier in Leon's report about the wastewater treatment plant expansion. So if I click on that particular project, this will give me a rundown, and anyone who views this, all of the information about this project, some updated photos that we have, and then some status updates. So what he shared earlier in his presentation is here in the status update as of today. And then further down the page are some more links to learn more about that particular project. I'll skip over. So that was something that's being driven by the city. We also have information about projects by other entities such as Tech dot. And you'll notice for this particular one, we do call out if there is a lane closure associated with the project on the title. So by clicking on this one, we'll not only see the goals of this project, but also an image explaining it in more detail. And again, at the bottom, a link to their project website on the Tech dot page. So this is a quick look at the Projects Module, again, available from the homepage of our City of Kyle website, as well as the mobile app. We worked with our web developer to make this project live, and I'm happy to report that this didn't come at any extra expense to the city to launch this project module. Only city staff time to enter in the information, so we hope that this, you know, meets the goals of council and what we've heard from residents in making our information not only citywide, but also, again, hyper-local to neighborhoods more accessible. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
No question, just great job. That's beautiful. Thank you. I know a lot of the citizens really wanted it and needed it, so beautiful job, beautiful job.
Just an amazing job by staff. Awesome. Great work. Yeah, I think it's even gonna be helpful for council members when we get questions. I think, you know, we can just click on this link and be able to answer that in real time, so thank you. Thank you for all your assistance, your hard work, the IT staff as well, so thank you all. Great job.
Thank you.
Good job Samantha. That's gonna be very helpful, because I think we all get questions about all different kinds of projects, which means we're tying up staff time constantly, trying to get updates. And to have a one-stop shop for construction projects going on in the city is invaluable. So I can imagine that not only will staff be sharing it with residents, but council will be sharing it with residents, and most importantly, residents will be sharing it with residents. So that's the combo we need to start getting more real-time information out to the community. So thank you for all the hard work. It's obviously pretty clear, the investments we've been making in our communicationist department in particular, is paying off in terms of benefits to the community, and that's a feather in your hat, so good job.
Thank you.
Alright, next up Consent Agenda. Anybody wanna pull anything or make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items Nine, Ten, and Eleven.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Shields, seconded by Councilor Tobias, that we approve the Consent Agenda as written. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries. Seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number Twelve, Approve a Resolution. Approving the resolution by the Board of Directors for the Alliance Regional Water Authority authorizing the issuance of contract revenue bonds, Series 2020B, in the amount of $34,530,000 for the City of Kyle's share of capital costs for the regional water supply contract project. Mr. Ert.
Woo. Thank you. Not to punt responsibility, but I think I'm gonna pass this immediately over to Graham. He has a presentation that he has prepared for tonight.
Good evening Mayor and Council. Hopefully you can hear me okay. I'm gonna share my screen here and go through a few slides.
Loud and clear, go ahead Graham.
Right. See that okay? See the slides?
Yes, sir.
Great. So again, my name is Graham Moore, Executive Director of Alliance Regional Water Authority. Appreciate your time this evening. Got a few slides. I'll go through it relatively quickly. Just an update on our overall projects, where we're at, and then some more details on the financing that we're asking you to approve tonight. Hopefully this map looks somewhat familiar to you, those of you that have been involved in the project for a while. It's our overall Phase 1B map. On the right side is our water treatment plant. The red lines are our pipelines, about 85 miles we're gonna use to deliver the treated water. Our green triangles are our customer delivery points for our sponsors. You'll also notice that we have some yellow squares. You might recall that we entered into an agreement with the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority to share capacity in our facilities. And so these are their customers, Lockhart, New Braunfels, and Gulfport, Special Utility District, that is receiving their water at the San Marcos Water Treatment Plant. And so Kyle's delivery point is up here at the FM 1626 pump station. So our Phase 1B program, it includes the Carrizo wells themselves, raw water collection lines, water treatment plant. As I mentioned previously, 85 miles of finished water transmission lines, a booster pump station in the Maxwell area. And then, of course, delivery to each of our customers' tanks and their systems for use by each of our customers. We also have included an administrative building, which we've got the financing that we hope to build there in Maxwell to house our staff and operations. So a quick status update as to where we're at. We secured water leases many years ago and permitted those waters to the two different groundwater conservation districts, starting in 2011, so that's been underway for some time. In 2017, we secured our product, project financing through the Texas Water Development Board and had that commitment. Our engineering design, we've got multiple design packages to complete everything you saw on the previous slide. Those are all in progress. Typically between 60 and 90% phases at this point in time as they move forward with that. We are also in the process of acquiring our easements for all the pipelines that we need. We've already secured the land for the water treatment plant and the booster pump station, so we're just continuing to work on all the easements. And new this time, from what I've dated you last year, is construction. That is in progress now. We have contracted with the well driller to drill the first four Carrizo wells. They are actively doing that as we speak. That should wrap up early in 2021, and then we'll move into more construction in the next year. All of which is to have a goal of having the water delivered in the summer of 2023. So we, within a project this size and nature, we occasionally run into some challenges, some foreseen and some unforeseen. Easement acquisition is one such challenge. We're dealing with approximately 300 different landowners to acquire easements for our pipelines. And so that takes a fair amount of effort to coordinate that and get through that process. That's not a surprise. We knew that would be a challenge, and in many cases, probably the biggest challenge of the project. But that continues to be the case. It certainly is a challenge for us, as we continue to be mindful of scheduling and performing those. The other, another component is the environmental clearance. We knew we'd have to get approval from the Corps of Engineers for any archaeological areas. Our first goal is to avoid any known areas of artifacts or anything of that nature. It's a lot easier to avoid those areas than it is to try and navigate them. And we've successfully done that based on the desktop surveys we've done. They have new staff in place at the Corps of Engineers that are putting in place new requirements of what they want to see and the villages they want to see. So that has taken us some time to understand exactly what their requirements are gonna be and how we can meet those realistically. We now have that plan in place, or are gonna be able to move forward and get our approvals without impacting any cultural resource areas, which is obviously key. And then final challenge to discuss through tonight is cost opinions. I don't think it'll be a surprise to you to learn that material and labor costs have been very volatile over the past several years, and even more so probably over the last nine months. The result of that has been higher estimates than what we had originally budgeted for the overall program. So moving into the financing, we had planned on doing three different debt issuances for the project in 2017, 2019, and 2020, utilizing the Texas Water Development Board's SWIFT funding. That's the State Water Limitation Fund of Texas. That is what we're moving forward with. I've got on your screen now a table that shows the ARWA total for each year in amount, and then Kyle's shared that as the next row. I've starred the 2020 column because we are asking approval to issue more debt than what we initially budgeted. Initially, that would be to the tune of $27 million for Alliance Regional Water Authority as a whole, which equates to $7.61 million more for Kyle. So that would bring the total of all three issuances for Kyle up to $67.725 million. So unfortunately, we are asking you to approve some additional financing. I do have a little bit of good news to report. Because we are relying on the SWIFT funding, just to recap, that is a 30-year term. We had talked to the City Council about that in previous years, and the city wanted to stretch that out to the maximum possible, which was the Water Development Board's 30 years. Because we're financing that through the SWIFT, there's a 20% state subsidy offered on that rate. In 2017, we closed at a 2.76% rate, which was a very good rate at that time. We were happy to get it. Last year, it went down to 2.33%. We budgeted something in between this year. Things were a little volatile earlier in the year when we were trying to budget, so we assumed a 2.65%. And I'm happy to report that we're able to close at a 2.03%. So that's a significant reduction over not only what we budgeted, but really what we'd seen in the previous years using the same fund. So as a result of that, the difference between what we had budgeted this year and the actual for Kyle ends up being a savings of just about $4.8 million in that annual interest savings. So again, low interest rates lead to some savings in terms of their annual debt service that'd be required. Now, wanted to put together a slide that showed you all three issuances combined and what that total looks like. And so this is just for Kyle. It looks at the 2017, 19, and 20, the budgeted versus the actual, and then what those differences are, savings. And so I think it's important to note that even as a result of issuing additional $7.61 million more for Kyle than what we had expected, we're showing a principal and interest savings of $8.6 million for Kyle over the life of the bonds. So that equates to an annual debt service savings of about $287,000 per year. So again, we're excited to be able to close on those low-interest rates and move forward with that. Now, one more slide to just talk about our next steps. As we continue here, we're in the process of securing approvals from all of the sponsors governing entities. That's why we're here presenting this to you tonight. We'll ask you to take action on it after this is complete. And then we will bring it to our board on October 28th for approval of all the resolutions. We will then, assuming all that goes according to plan, we will close just before Thanksgiving on the 20th on these loans. And then the first payment will be due in August 2021. It'll be interest-only, and then the subsequent payments will be principal and interest both for the following years. This has already been budgeted into our budget, which has been rolled into the City of Kyle's budget, so there's no surprises there. This is something that I believe has already been budgeted. So that's all the slides I have. Of course, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the project or the financing. I also have Jennifer Ritter, our financial advisor with Specialized Public Finances onboard, and I believe Carol Palumbo, our bond counsel with McCall, Park, Kirsten Horton is here too. So between all of us, hopefully we can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you Graham. Appreciate the update. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Moore or any of his team?
Graham, hi, how are you doing today? Or tonight I should say. I'm doing well. I just want to, first of all, thank you and the Bonding Authority and everything for getting that lower interest rate. That's going to be very helpful. And I do wanna, I do have a question for Scott. So our first interest payment, that is not, what was actually budgeted is what we had, and that has not changed with the, with the interest rates and everything, correct? The amount that's due in August?
That's correct. Well, I'll answer, and then the city can jump in. The amounts we're asking to be due in August have not changed. That would be the same. The subsequent years after that would be a reduction from what we had estimated they would be, and so we will make those as part of our regular budget approvals each year and true. And so we will make those as part of our regular budget approvals each year and true those numbers out to the debt servicing.
Okay, thank you. And also, um, I wanted to let some of the residents know that um, especially because they're also um, customers of County Line, that County Line is also a member of the um, Alliance Regional Water Authority. Uh, so um, this all pertains to them as well, so, thank you.
Councilmember Rizzo, I guess my question is for Perez. When did we first become a part of the Alliance Water Regional Facility for the new Carrizo Springs Aquifer? And so that way, I know the residents have been wondering where these costs are coming from. I wanted to go back on a timeline and and show them when we started this, when this project was started.
The council, Mayor and Council, this is Perez Mahid, City's Director of Finance. The first debt issue that Alliance issued on behalf of City of Kyle was in 2015. We had a bond issue in 2015, another one in seventeen, a third issue was in 2019. Between those three debt issues for Kyle, we have issued thirty-six point seven million dollars to date. And then this is the fourth bond issue Alliance is doing on behalf of Kyle for our share of capital cost, which is thirty-four point five million dollars. So City of Kyle has not had a water rate increase. We've been able to absorb it thus far. Through 2014 was the last rate increase we had for water system. City Council just recently approved ten percent rate increase in this new fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So with all the other operating costs going up for the City of Kyle over the years, for power, for chemicals, for labor, and in addition, Alliance debt cost, this is the first rate increase we've had since 2014, ten percent. So I don't know if that answered your question, Councilmember Rizzo?
I just, I just wanted the citizens out there to know the timeline on this, when it first started, and then to explain the rate increases. So that was a perfect explanation. Um, uh, next year, you know, we'll just do our best to try to quell some of that as well. But ten percent in four, since 2015, that's that's not bad. That's a good uh, increase. So um, we inherited this uh, um, what do you call it, Alliance with uh, with the Alliance Water Regional because of our growth. And we're trying to do our best to make sure that we can keep the costs down for our residents. So thank you for that explanation. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll jump in real quick. Um, one, uh, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Moore. Uh, do you uh, have any issue with providing this presentation to our staff for them to disseminate to us?
They already have it, but I'm I'm happy to share it with anybody, absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, secondly, um, I appreciate your question, Councilmember Bizzo, because we all know that that's uh, a hot topic for a lot of our residents, the water uh, bills and different things. Uh, and certainly, uh, I I agree with you, Perez. We haven't, and it is, I mean, because I agree with you because it's a fact that the water rate increase hasn't happened since 2014, and we'll just, we'll have the one coming up here soon. Uh, but for a lot of people, they they don't, they don't see it that way. And certainly when they see their bills increasing. And certainly, I think you provided a lot of examples of why those uh, uh, those increases have happened. Um, we did, uh, I know a lot of people probably didn't see this or realize this happened, but we were able to, as Perez pointed out, um, uh, absorb all of that ten percent increase that was expected uh, last year. And it was a ten percent rate increase that was expected for three years. Uh, and we were able to uh, absorb that one last year. I'm sure nobody really noticed that, but uh, it was a, it was a huge uh, huge task to take on and and do that. So I was glad that the council was able to do that. Um, I don't have any particular uh, additional questions. Uh, I I agree it was an inherited thing, but I also believe that it was a much-needed approach to our water, long-term water resources and infrastructure. And it's just, unfortunately, uh, it costs a lot of money to do it. Thank you, Paul.
We'll put Councilmember Ellison, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Moore? All right. No action from us needed, correct? No, we do need action. This is the, we have a public hearing on this item as well. So if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Uh, do we have anyone registered to speak or here uh, at the, at City Hall who would like to come forward and speak?
It appears not.
Okay, if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It is now closed. Uh, entertain a motion.
Mayor, um, I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution approving the uh, resolution by the Board of Directors of the Alliance Regional Water Authority, authorizing the issuance of contract revenue bonds.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Shields, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve, Agenda Item Number Twelve. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Uh, Graham, I'll just say briefly that I appreciate all the work that you've put into this. You and I have gotten to know each other through through the years. I've gone to some conferences with you and uh, sat on the Alliance Water Board for a while. I know just how technical uh, these projects are and big and how important it is to have a steady hand leading. Uh, you have certainly met that standard in every way. So thank you for shepherding this project forward the way that you have. Um, it's, it's probably the most important capital project we have going on, and it's, it has probably been the most important capital project going on in our city uh, for some number of years now. And uh, you know, it it's hard to put into words the way Phase 1A connects to 1B and how the the relationships have developed and timelines have streamlined uh, between other jurisdictions to make this project be as efficient as it has turned out, going to turn out to be. Uh, and that's testimony to your leadership. Uh, also, I want to give a shout out to James Erp. Uh, James has has been one of the important uh, people in helping to keep the the big narrative behind this project moving forward from the standpoint of Kyle and uh, and Councilwoman Sheil now as well, serving on the board. So this is the big, this is the big one. You know, this is, this is the big vote. So uh, I'm glad that I get to cast a vote for it, and I appreciate everything you've done, Graham. Anyone else? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number Thirteen, authorize award and execution of a purchase order to M.A. Smith Contracting. Uh, lowest and most responsible bidder in an amount not to exceed two million, six hundred, seven thousand dollars in change, which includes a five percent contingency for the reconstruction and widening of Wendy Hill Street. Mr. Barbara? Big votes?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. Leon Barber, City Engineer. Sorry about that. Um, we received eight bids for this particular project, and I was real pleased with the bids that came in. We, they ranged from about two and a half to about three and a half million. So the bids were really tight, which is a good thing, uh, when you bid these types of projects. But this section of Wendy Hill is a section between more or less Cherrywood and Purple Martin. And uh, if some of you remember, I think in 2013 and 2015, that crossing overtopped, and uh, public works had to spend quite a bit of time uh, getting that repaired back and so the public could travel on it. One of the dilemmas that we've had with this project is that we uh, that we're getting funding from the General Land Office, so they've got a real tight timeframe on it. So we tried to minimize the need to get right away. We tried to minimize everything that we could so we could get the project built within their their time and their guidelines. An understatement to say that their their guidelines and process was uh, is, it was difficult, very difficult. I can't overstate that enough, but our project manager helped push it through and get it through. So here we are, we're getting ready to award this contract with council's approval to M.A. Smith, the amount of two point six million dollars. But uh, the, but we, the way we planned it, we will start uh, notify the contractor about the award of the bid. Then they'll have to make the box culverts that we're going to be placing underneath that to replace those existing box culverts. And they'll need time to have those box culverts culverts built. Uh, the actual construction, we don't anticipate that starting until actually January. So we have about eight to nine months to get this knocked out. Another difficulty we had with this particular project is there is not really a good detour route to set up for this project. You know, it would have been nice, we could just blocked it off and just said, uh, here, Mr. Contractor, it's all yours. Go ahead and build it as quickly as you can. But uh, we we weren't able to do that. So what's what's happened is that uh, we are giving, we are going to have to close the road down for at least six days. That's what we plan to do. And uh, everything should be in preparation to lay those box culverts, get it in and get it and get it done and get it opened again. We do have a uh, a stick and a carrot in the contract. If they get through with the project before the six days, they get a bonus. If they take more than six days, they have to pay us for the delay. So that's the highlights of the project, but we're looking forward to getting this one started as soon as possible. Any questions?
Leon, do we have a elevation or um, a a drawing of what this project's going to look like?
We have plans and profiles from the engineer, but they're not the best to look at. They're they're not as, to the layperson, it's going to be hard for them to pick up what's there. Let me see what we can do to get something like that and maybe put it on our new website.
That would be great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, that would be much appreciated. Um, and I would love to uh, get that into every project that we have, that if they can finish on time uh, or ahead of time, that there's some kind of incentive. And if they don't, then they pay us. And I'm not really saying that tongue-in-cheek. I would love to set something up like that. Um, uh, I think Councilmember Sheil brings up a great question and kind of getting what that looks like. I had a particular question in regards to, and maybe you can just describe this for us, uh, Leon, but the pedestrian improvements in the safety light, um, scope of the project. Could you talk to us a little bit about that or what that might look like? Because I I live over in that area, and I know that that is a um, common pedestrian walking between that that Dollar General that's over there. You've got the the Meadows of Kyle, I believe is the name of that, that uh, neighborhood over there. Of course, you've got Indian paintbrush and amber wood and different things like that. And it is uh, used quite frequently by pedestrians walking up and down that way. So if you could share a little bit about what that might look like?
Certainly. Right now, we have sidewalk planned on the south side. It's going to be tying, say, from Cherrywood to the Dollar General. That's the only sidewalk that we have in the project uh, that we can squeeze in. Actually, it was a really tight squeeze to get that sidewalk in there, but uh, they were able to figure out a way to get it in there. Uh, we do have some safety lighting at uh, Purple Martin. There is a light there, some safety lighting there. And then there's something at Indian Paintbrush. We're not sure how close it may be, but there's, there appears to be some safety lighting there. We are adding a safety light at Cherrywood. Uh, and if there's a need for us additional, to put any additional lighting, then we'll certainly look at that too.
Okay, yeah, because I think the Agenda Item says it goes all the way to Park Street. So that's further east of the U-Haul Place too, right?
Right, that's where we taper everything into this.
Gotcha, okay. Well, um, I'm delighted to hear about the the sidewalk and certainly you'll be able to squeeze that in uh, on the engineering side. Uh, it will, it will be used, and it will be much appreciated there. Uh, and I certainly would appreciate the, any attention to, if we need to add any additional safety lighting, to just have that always uh, in the back of mind. Thank you, Leon.
Yes, sir.
Leon, this is Councilmember WES. Um, on Wendy Hill, how far is the construction going to go? Is it going to go all the way to 205? That crossroad there? Like where that Poco Loco uh, gas station is? Not that far?
No, I don't think they're going to go that far. They're just going to go past Purple Martin, just a transition in there.
Okay.
I wish we could, but we don't, we're not taking it that far.
Just Councilmember Rizzo.
It's almost a half mile.
Councilmember Rizzo, Leon.
There'll be, there'll be turning lanes on uh, Purple Martin as well? To go into that subdivision?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Will there be uh, turning lanes as well that would go into uh, Purple Martin?
I'd have to look at the plans. I know we had problems there before with the turning lane because of the Dollar General, so I'll have to check the plans on that.
Okay.
Yeah, there was, there wasn't enough room to to extend that turning lane in there. Let me, let me follow up on that, Councilmember.
And just to piggyback on that, I apologize, Councilmember WES, but you're bringing up a great point on the turning lanes. Um, turning lane also, um, I know it gets backed up a lot of times with folks trying to turn into Cherrywood or even I mainly know it's said with Cherrywood. Um, but do you know about that, or would that also be something you'd have to get back to us on?
I don't think we did any improvements in that section, but I will double check.
Leon, this is Councilmember Rizzo, just to piggyback on what Councilmember Sheil was saying. Just make sure we get the start dates, the finish dates, and uh, make sure that our contractor knows that we're going to uh, hold them to that finish date. Uh, we know there's circumstances that happen, but if we could really keep an eye on, that'd be great on the progress. We'd get progress reports as well, that'd be very helpful. Appreciate it, and thank you for all your help.
Thank you.
Weather permitting.
This is Texas.
We have a deadline.
Don't give him mixed excuses, Councilmember.
It's too hard.
But this, I think you brought up a great. It's a great project for the module that we just heard about, uh, and just continue to put those in there.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Leon. Any, any further questions? Motions?
Mayor?
Mayor?
I'll let uh, Councilmember Ellison do it.
Mayor, I'd like to motion approve the item as written.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilwoman Ellison, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo, that we approve the purchase order to M.A. Smith Contracting uh, for an amount not to exceed uh, two point six zero seven five one three point four million dollars, uh, which includes a five percent contingency. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Quick question. So it, we we did talk about, you know, one thing like the lighting and different things. So if there, and I know we added the contingency as well. Uh, if there are some things that needed to be adjusted or improved, uh, would approving this contract prevent us from doing that, or could we make adjustments later?
Councilmember, our project manager tries to stay with the original amount that was bid for the project. So where she needs to cut things out that you don't need or that won't, and that won't sacrifice the quality of the project, she'll do that. If there's things that we we know are safety issues, she will do everything in her power to get those improvements made. So there is room to, the the five percent is to make sure that we, if we have a problem in the field, it needs to be addressed quickly, we can, we can respond to the contractor and tell them to go ahead and move forward with whatever, whatever surprise that we find out there. So there there will be room, we hope. It's going to be a very quick contract, so we don't, we're not anticipating a lot of problems. We, the worst that could happen to us is utilities there that we didn't know about. But we did check really well with the various utilities, and we think we have, we're pretty clear with the utilities. So that's the only surprise that I can think of that we would find in there. But we do have room for some extra uh, safety improvements if we, if we can keep, keep a tight hand on our budget.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number Fourteen, approve a resolution of support for the transportation. Next up, agenda item number 14, approve a resolution of support for the transportation development credit application. Mr. Sellers.
Mayor, I would have to recuse myself from this one.
Okay.
Great. Mayor, Council Scott Sellers, City Manager. For the record, this is an item that was recently brought forward to the city of Kyle from Hayes County based on work that the county has done in the past that impacts the text dot system. As I think everyone's aware, the county has for years worked fairly large projects that have improved the text dot system and has done that pretty much at their cost or heavily at their cost. By doing that, they have been eligible for these transportation credits through Campo. And as they do projects throughout the county, the county commissioners have taken a look at the overall projects, the amount of credits that are available to them, and they've decided to use those, a certain amount of those credits against the match participation for our siting phase one project. The local match for that siting project is roughly $3.8 million. The city of Kyle's portion is $1.23 million of that 3.8. And in this case, the county is wanting to apply these credits from Campo and Textot against their portion of the project. So this would leave the city of Kyle, the $1.23 million cash match over three years, but it does allow the county to utilize the dollars in hand for construction purposes as, as we further the, the engineering, get into the construction phase. Just as an FYI, money's expended by the county up to this point are not eligible for that local match based on the application phasing process. So basically, we are bringing forward to you a resolution to allow the county to seek these transportation credit, credit amount through the transportation credit application process with Campo. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Mr. Sellers?
I have one or two, actually. So when would we start being responsible for paying that 1.23 million?
I believe over the next three years, once the engineering phase is completed and moves into construction phase, I anticipate that coming in the following fiscal year, FY22.
Okay. So we don't have to worry about it in this budget and make any adjustments to our current budget?
That's, that's correct. Purvez, if you can talk very quickly about the CIP and the monies we have set aside for this project and the CIP?
We have, Councilmember, this is Purvez, Mahid City's Director of Finance. We have set aside $3 million for this project.
Okay. So then we're actually going to be saving 1.77 million?
For phase one, that would be accurate, but we, we have looked at kind of a combined phase one and phase two approach. And so for the, the public, the, the phase one of the rail site and relocation is simply relocating the existing siding north of Burleson, which runs roughly to Coler's Crossing, tapers right around Coler's Crossing. The phase two piece that we will go to Campo in this next call for, for projects would be to build what, what we believe to be a, an overpass. Engineering looked at over and under. They've recommended an overpass there. And that engineering is also moving forward. We need to get to 30% design so we can have an engineer estimate ready to go for that call for, for projects. Hayes County is overseeing both phase one and phase two. I believe the county will be seeking these transportation credit, development credits for phase two as well. We are just not sure yet what our local match is. So having the $3 million in the budget, 1.23 will go to phase one and an unknown amount at this point will be still required for phase two.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy. Anyone else? Um, motions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution to support the transportation development credit application.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve the transportation development credit resolution of support. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next up, agenda item number 15, first reading and ordinance submitting chapter 53 of the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately 2.4 acres of land from R33 to R1C for property located 104 Creekside Trail. This item has a public hearing. Mr. Coons, go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is Howard Coons. I'm the Community Development Director for the record. I'm going to share my screen here for a little bit so we can talk about this, this item. What you're looking at is about a little less than two and a half acres on the east side of town, right at the intersection of 150 and Creekside Trail. The property currently is zoned R33, which is our highest density multifamily availability. It was zoned about two years ago or so, but it was never built. So the property is actually still vacant. Let's see that there's nothing built on it. The expectation of the applicant tonight is to change the zoning from R33 to R1C. R1C is the zoning that allows for residential and it also allows for it to be residential as a condo. So the expectation would be that the, the owner would be able to own the property fee simple inside the structure, but the outside of the structure or any, any combination would still belong to a common ownership. This went in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission about a week ago, and they voted in favor unanimously at the time, six to nothing, to recommend approval of this request. And the applicant is on the line tonight if you have any questions for him. And I'm also available for any questions you might have for me.
Thank you, Howard. If there's no objections before we get into questions, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience or online who wishes to speak to do so now. Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward?
None.
Okay. Is anyone online? All right. Then without, if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It is now closed. Questions, comments, motions?
Howard, is there a height maximum to this?
We, we do have height requirements in the city, yes. Off the top of my head, I do not know that. If you want to give me a second, I can check.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not giving permission for a five-story condo complex right there.
I don't believe so. Let me, let me check one thing real quick.
I'm just making sure.
Are those considered, while you're looking that up, are those considered townhomes to the west of there and the north of that site?
By definition, in our zoning ordinance, they are not. They are paired homes. They are single structures that have two dwelling units. And by the, by the modern code, our definition of townhome would be single structures that have four or more units. So I don't know necessarily what the, the expectation was at the time that those were permitted, but they, they are zoned R1T.
But yeah, they are duplexes.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
Height limit in R1C is 45 feet above grade.
So about how many stories is that, 45 feet?
45 feet is probably four stories.
Okay. So that'd be, be, be twice as much as the R1Ts that are surrounding it. Okay. This is R1T.
Right now, the, the height limit for the current zoning is 35 feet with, I'm sorry. I take that back. Current zoning is 45 feet now with R33. So the, the change to R1C will not change the allowable height of the structures on the parcel.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Howard, this is Councilmember Rizzo. Could you see a duplex being that high? I'm, I'm thinking two stories at the most. I'm, I just don't see a duplex being up that tall, anything past two stories.
A duplex? A duplex, I would be surprised if you built a four-story duplex. Perhaps if you had a garage on the ground floor that was above grade and then three stories over that, I would be surprised with that. But the, the curious thing about R1C is that it does not prescribe an architecture type and it does not prescribe a land use per se other than residential. So this could be similar to R33 being an apartment complex wherein they would be stacked flats and the occupant would be able to own the interior space. They could also be some type of paired home, anything from duplex up to triplex. They could build a series of townhomes. But the, the curious thing about this is, is not necessarily anything to do with the, the architecture type or the land use being all that, that revolutionary. We have a number of this in Kyle all over. What's interesting about this is the ownership arrangement. We, we don't have a lot of multifamily that's owner occupied, and that's exactly what this zoning district is entitled to do. It's entitled to put folks that own their home and yet still exist in a, in a multifamily scenario. And that's a, that's a wanted, we, we have a, we have a deficit of that use in the city of Kyle. There is a market for that use in the city of Kyle. So for that purpose, that's one of the reasons that staff was able to get behind it in, in light of the fact that it's arguably not going to change the density of the property. It's 2.3 acres. So no matter how many units they put on that, they still have a requirement to park them, which is going to be based on the number of bedrooms. They'll still have an impervious surface ratio that they're not allowed to exceed. So the, the limiting factor on this that is going to make it a worthwhile proof of concept is the idea that it's only 2.3 acres.
Yeah. I, I definitely see that there's a need for it. So I, I know Austin has a lot of condos and the residents there have all expressed how they love living there and they don't want to deal with the maintenance outside. And that's one of the reasons that they, they've always gone that route of a condo. So yeah, I definitely think it's a, a pretty good project. Thank you for that explanation, Howard. Appreciate it.
Mayor? I'd like to, I, I concur with what Councilmember Rizzo just said and, and the explanation as well by Mr. Coontz on the needed diversity in, in housing stock and, and different types. And this is the multifamily, but it's actually an ownership capacity to it. So I'm actually in support of this and I would like to make a motion to approve the item as written.
Second.
Okay. It's been motion by Councilor Ellison, seconded by Councilor Tobias, that we approve the zoning change from R33 to condos. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Mayor, that's a first reading. Oh, six to zero is Alex not back?
Yeah. We don't have Councilor Beal almost back yet. We're trying to get him back on, so we'll have to bring him back. All right. Next up, agenda item number 16, approve, first reading and ordinance submitting chapter 53 of the city of Kyle, Texas to zone approximately 2.67 acres of land from agricultural to retail services for property located at 1805 West RR150. This item also has a public hearing. Mr. Coons?
I'm again going to share my screen so you can get a couple of the visuals that we're working from. So here's the location of the site. We're at North Old Stagecoach and 20, 2770. And this is 150 moving west. This is Plum Creek on the right side of the image. There's the Valero gas station. This is the large open field that is just to the north side of hometown Kyle. And the site is right here, somewhere in the neighborhood of not quite three acres, like two and two-thirds of an acre. And the applicant has come forward with a request to make this RS, which would be retail services, which would allow for, you know, any of the, the number of most intense highway commercial uses that we would have. The existing zoning looks like this. There's already RS to the west outside of this property moving along. This right here is the PEC offices. And then this is the, the gas station again and those commercial uses. This is Spicy Bites right here and there's the Vet right there. So, um, so this is the, the, the subject site and it went in front of the P&amp;Z about a week ago. And if memory serves correctly, they found, they supported this six to nothing. So I can make myself available for any questions you might have.
Howard, this is Councilmember Rizzo. Looking at it on the map, it looks more like a lot of the drive-in traffic would come off of 150. Maybe they've got enough there on the side for maybe one entrance exit. So it, it's kind of what I'm looking at there. So it.
My expectation is that there'll probably be something lined up between these driveways here. They, they may actually put a driveway that lines up with this one here, but without question that they will put one on North Old Stagecoach as well because of what they're going to try and do. It's a hard corner and they're going to want to be able to capitalize on that in case anybody that wants to travel north on 2770 after visiting the site, that person most likely is going to want to come out this entrance and then be able to make the, the left movement to go north rather than have to come out and, and make the south movement on 150 and then the left through the intersection.
Correct. And my, my, where I'm going with this is because we're getting ready to work on Stagecoach Road, maybe expand the roadway a little bit. Are we taking that into consideration before we approve this? Maybe having to widening that road a little bit?
The city staff is not, no, sir. Community Development Department has not considered that. We've, we've considered it on the existing condition, most notably because there's no schedule for those improvements of which you speak. So I don't know necessarily that an alignment could be put forward right now.
Councilmembers, this is Connor Overman. I'm the applicant, working for the property owner. We've already solicited some bids for proposals to do a traffic impact analysis on this one as well. We do know that, one, it's at the hard corner and, and two, there's, there's going to be some improvements most likely in the roadway associated with the driveways, locating those and getting traffic counts. So we do intend to, to get a full traffic impact analysis study going on this one.
And, and, and are we looking at maybe a, a cost sharing on the improvements or something the developer wants to do?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right. Hold the floor.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on this unless there are any objections. All right. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward?
There are none.
Okay. Anyone online? I'll take that as a no. And unless there are objections, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It's now closed. I'd like to make a motion to approve our zoning.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Shield. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you. We'll, we'll have to bring it back because it's not seven, zero.
All right.
All right. Next up, agenda item number 17, we're actually going to have to go into exec on this one. Scott, it was, it was on the agenda for exec. Scott, it was on the agenda for exec earlier. We just weren't able to get to it before we had to start our regular meeting. Scott, do you want to go there now or do you want to get the other items done first?
Mayor, I think we can hit the other items fairly quickly and then we can go in later.
Okay, I'm going to switch over to agenda item number eighteen, consider approval of Bron Holmes, considerance right-of-way licensing agreement. I think this item also needs to be postponed. Is that right, Mr. Koontz?
It was postponed from the last time, but I haven't been in the weeds with this as much as our city attorney has been. I think I talked with Paige on Friday that she would bring this forward to you.
Yeah, so this is James, Assistant City Manager. They did request that it be postponed. Again, they're still working on finalizing their landscape plan.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to postpone agenda item number eighteen until the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
It's moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Next up, agenda item number nineteen, in order, second reading and ordinance amending Chapter fifty-three of the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of assigning zoning to one hundred twenty-eight point five eight acres of land from agricultural to R13, approximately thirty acres of land from R1T to R1T and approximately twenty point three seven acres of land to community commercial for property located off East Post Road, just north of Clover's subdivision. Mr. Koontz.
This, like you stated, is a second reading or a request that has come before you before. At your previous, when this was read, and if memory serves, it was in September, I believe it was the I believe it was the second voting meeting in September and it was been postponed to tonight's meeting. I believe there have been some discussions that have been had between the applicant and the administration. So maybe the city manager would like to weigh in on anything that's happened with the externalities associated with this site. But otherwise, staff still supports the application. The Planning and Zoning Commission supported the application. And like I said, when this came up before you previously, it was approved or recommended for approval six to one on first reading.
Okay, thank you, Howard. Scott, do you have anything to add? We've been discussing the road situation.
Yes, yes, I do. In fact, if we could go into executive session on.
Yeah, this is actually the item I was thinking we were going to be adding to executive session from earlier. We really need to be in exec on both of these items, I think.
That's right, and there, it looks like there are quite a few participants in the meeting for seventeen and nineteen. So if we can go into executive session for both and then return, that would be great.
Okay, Councilwoman Shield, go ahead.
Okay. Pursuant to Chapter five five one Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, including all or any of the following topics. Pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section five five one dot zero seven one. And we're talking about, what are we talking about? Items number seventeen and nineteen.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Villa Lobos. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. I've got, motion carries seven to zero. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Next up, we'll go ahead and take up agenda item number nineteen first. Second reading and ordinance submitting Chapter fifty-three zoning of the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately one hundred and twenty-eight point five eight acres of land to a combination of R13, R1T and community commercial. Mr. Sellers, do you want to make a recommendation on this item?
Yes, Mayor, so the applicant and I have spoken about this item. We are working on an agreement between a variety of parties. And so we are proposing to bring this back for action, the zoning item back for action at the next city council meeting.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to postpone agenda item number nineteen until the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilman Ellison. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Right next up, agenda item number seventeen, request to consent for additional land to North Hayes County Municipal Utility District number one, Mr. Sellers.
Okay, Mayor and Council Scott Sellers, for the record. This is an item that was brought forward by Representative from Kimley Horn, engineers. The Shadow Creek Mud is located on Windy Hill in an area of the city of Kyle that's somewhat apart from the city limits. It's located in the ETJ and was established many years ago. The applicant is requesting to annex their property, which sits on the hill and adjacent to the mud, into the mud and that needs a consent to annex from the city council. So with that, I believe the applicant and their engineer is online and available for questions.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Sellers or the applicant?
I would say probably my opinion on this is that our, the council over the course of the last year has been pretty consistently trying to limit the expansion of the mud districts in our ETJ. There's concern about the, the the way that mud taxation is set up and how it affects the city of Kyle. Because of that, for myself, at least, I would prefer to keep the mud districts within their current boundaries. I know that Shadow Creek in particular has an agreement for defecations of debt over the course of the twenty years of the life cycle of the bonds that they've issued without the ability to issue new debt such that after twenty years, there'll be an annexation. For myself, I think that that's, you know, once we get a little bit closer to the time when the city of Kyle expands out into and can make improvements along Windy Hill, that, you know, we will look to take on more of the projects that are out there. But just generally have a philosophy of trying to prevent muds from expanding unless there is a significant and compelling reason for that to happen. So, you know, for myself, I think I'm probably a no on this, you know, and so if anyone else has any comments or suggestions or thoughts, now would be the time to speak.
Is there anyone in the, the audience that still wants to come forward and speak? This item does not have a public hearing, but just want to make sure if somebody wants to speak on this project before we take them up.
The engineer on the project, there are some people who do want to speak, Travis.
Okay, we can do that now.
Yeah, I'll review things there after they talk.
Okay.
Well, we do thank you for giving us the opportunity to at least speak at this, at this evening. We are Dennis and Deborah Lake. Dennis is a brick and rock mason and a masonry contractor. I'm a retired teacher from Hayes Consolidated School District. I previously taught at Kyle Elementary School and Tom Green Elementary School until I retired. We have three grown sons who attended the schools in the Kyle area through the twelfth grade and graduated from Hayes High School. My husband and I have lived on the property, live on the property on Windy Hill. Over the course of eleven years, from nineteen seventy-three until nineteen eighty-four, we purchased five parcels of adjoining land, giving us a total of twenty-five point five three acres. We were in hopes that one day we would sell the property and help supplement our retirement, which is the stage we're at right now. We currently have our property for sale, but we are finding that it is almost impossible to sell our property unless it is annexed into the mud. We strongly hope you will vote for the annexation of, annexation of the property to the North Hayes County Municipal Utility District number one.
Yeah, I'm Dennis, just. We, you know, we've, we've lived here, lived on this property for fifty years almost. Working hard, we've always worked hard and always trying to do the right thing. When the county came to widen Windy Hill, we didn't complain and accepted, accepted the county's, the county's offer. We didn't try to negotiate for more money. We, we just did what we were supposed to do. We also gave, gave up part of our property to allow a wastewater easement to go through our property to get to the mud treatment plant. This easement was provided, was, was to provide sewage for a new subdivision that, that was being built across our road. Again, we didn't complain about this and the easement is through our property going to the treatment plant. On top of this, after, after the wastewater is treated, it's, it's, it is discharged, the treated, treated is discharged and the treated wastewater comes back. Treated wastewater comes back through our property in what was a dry creek bed. This treated wastewater goes through our property for about approximately eight hundred feet and it cuts off about two acres of our property. We can't get a tractor or truck back there to even mow it to that two acres. The treated water flows through there, through the once dry creek, which when it was dry, we could get across it. The only time it was wet was when it would rain. And it runs twenty-four hours a day and it's been that way for, for years. Again, again, we have not complained to anyone. As you can see, we have, we have sacrificed a lot for the mud. The mud has easements through our property to get to their treatment plant. After the waste, after the wastewater is treated, it's discharged back through our property, prohibiting us access to our, to, to the two acres on our property. The subdivision across the street annex, across the street annexation was allowed. If we, if we don't get, get your approval, our property will value, our property value will go down extremely. We respectfully expect to, to be treated equally as the previous investor, investor that was granted access to the mud. And we hope y'all could, could approve it. Thanks.
Hi, Harrison Hudson with Kimley Horn. I just wanted to add, the property owners of the lakes negotiated with the mud to grant that easement in order to gain LUE capacity for a future project on their site. So that's why they dedicated that easement in, in, in order to get service. And the wastewater treatment plant is actually contiguous to their property just on the other side of the creek. So it makes perfect sense for that wastewater treatment plant to serve this property's wastewater service. And in fact, the city of Kyle does not have wastewater service anywhere near the project. So it would be an absorbent amount for the city to extend service. And so we're actually located in the wastewater CCN for the mud, so it's, I mean, makes sense on all fronts that they would be annexed and be allowed to serve on a site that's contiguous where they've already negotiated LUE capacity for the product, for future development. And so it, it makes a lot of sense on a lot of fronts to be annexed and since they're already contiguous and already negotiated service. I don't know if anybody has any additional engineering questions or LUE questions related to it. I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you all. Any questions for the applicants? Comments?
Mayor, I'd like to say, again, I mean, I feel for the homeowners, but I just have a really hard time with expanding any muds, you know, in, in our ETJ. The other issue is, of course, we're just not ready for more on Windy Hill, just traffic-wise, until we can get that road expanded. So unfortunately, I am going to have to say no to this as well.
Yeah, unfortunately, I kind of share the same sentiment. It's, it, it's tough. You know, the roadway is, is far from being able to handle any more traffic out there. But yeah, I've got to think about the taxpayers. I've got to think about what a mud would does towards the tax base. And, you know, you know, we're hoping twenty years from now that that mud will start paying back. But, you know, as infrastructure decays, they're, they're investing back into that infrastructure. And, you know, when, when will the taxpayers, you know, see their return on the, everything they've supplied out there, water, wastewater? So it's, it's a really tough decision, I'll tell you right now.
Would you all like to make a motion? All right, since, since we can't, since we don't have any motions, we're going to have to just let the item pass. Off the agenda, that is, meaning we will not take action on it now unless somebody wants to make a motion. Okay. If there are no objections, we're going to move to the city manager's report.
All right, Mayor and Council Scott Sellers for the. Give it just a second here for the screen to show up. City manager's report, several items on here. The November third election day conflicts with our city council meeting. This is something that we are very accustomed to year over year. And usually what we do is, is ask council to move the regularly scheduled meeting usually one day after November third meeting. So that's what we are asking the council to do tonight. Don't believe any official action needs to be taken other than council agreeing that November fourth, Wednesday, works for the next city council meeting and then we can, we can get that noticed. So wanted to pause and see if there are any issues with Wednesday, November fourth.
No objection.
No objection.
All right. The next item is the mass food distribution events. You can see we've got several that are coming up. October thirty-first being the, the next one at Lehman High School. These are eight to eleven. Then we will have one November fourteenth, December twelfth. And as always, we, we would love to have volunteers from the city as well as from the community. It is that time for wastewater averaging. I won't go through the bullet points here on the slide for that the public can read those. In general, we. You can read those. Uh, in general, we take the, uh, months, November, December, January, where, uh, it is posed that people aren't watering their yards, uh, their, their lawns. We, we average out these months with water usage and then apply those, uh, we apply that rate as a standard set rate throughout the remainder of the year, uh, which goes into effect in April. So this is just a reminder to the public that the next several months, we will be watching that water usage to determine what the wastewater bill will be. And another reminder that early voting is currently ongoing. Uh, you can see here the, the dates of the remaining early voting as well as election day voting, uh, coming forward. And here are the locations for earlier voting. Uh, we've already had a great turnout and we continue to, uh, request that, uh, that everyone gets out and votes. So, thank you. There's, there seems to be a little bit more capacity in the, in the chambers now than there wasn't on the first couple of days of voting. So again, this is a call. Please get out the vote and we, uh, we have several locations for you. The West RM 150 naming committee has its first meeting Wednesday, October 21st. This is tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. This will be a hybrid meeting, meaning in the, uh, council chambers as well as online. And you can see the link there, uh, to watch it, participate, uh, view it on, on Spectrum or Kyle Channel 10. The Spooktacular Cruise Drive Thru, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but, uh, here's one more reminder for everybody. The, uh, activity is previously the Center Street Trick or Treat event. Uh, due to COVID, we've moved this event to Greck Clark Park. It will be on October 24th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. So please bring your, your vehicles, your children. You're welcome and encouraged to come in costume as you drive through. Uh, you can see here on the, on the right, some of the contests that have already been held, like costume contests. And, uh, pumpkin carving contest is just underway. And again, there's the, the crews. So more information is online at cityofkyle.com slash recreation slash spooktacular, October 2020. And finally, we have our curative, uh, COVID-19 mobile testing van that is at the HACIST Performing Arts Center. We've had a pretty good turnout so far. We encourage the public to continue to utilize this asset. It is free again through November in that location. So, uh, more information, uh, please visit cityofkyle.com. And with that, uh, that concludes the city manager's report.
Thank you, Scott. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Uh, don't we have to go into?
Or do we have more exec?
We have more exec.
Sorry. I retract that second.
Councilwoman Sheil, go ahead.
All right, pursuant to chapter 551 Texas government code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in chapter 551 of the Texas government code, including any or all of the following topics. Number one, pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to section 551 dot 071. Alexander Property Coronavirus Relief Funds, Barton PID K47, Low Income Development on Philomena, Changeable Electronic Variable Message Sign and 104 South Burleson and Design Build Agreement. Mayor had to step away. Mayor Pro Tim, um, had to step away. So I am now going to, uh, adjourn the meeting. So do we have a motion to adjourn executive session? Oh, reconvene. Yeah, first of all, we need to make a motion to re, reconvene from executive session.
Second.
Emoved.
There was no action, um, taken during executive session. There's no action taken now. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
I don't know that we have a forum.
Yeah, we do.
We do. There's two there and you and me. There's two at City Hall and then you and me.
All right.
Got it.
Okay, so all, um, I, I am motion, I motioned.
I seconded.
Second.
Okay, so I motioned. Um, Councilmember Rizzo seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, good night, everybody.
Good night, guys.
Good night. Good night.